Okay. Call this meeting back to order at six thirty-three PM. We are in executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Start with public input if anybody here wants to speak. Seeing no public, I will move on to the student report. Sophie, class of twenty twenty-four. I always screw up your last name, so Sa- Sa-Kay?
Sa-Kay, yes.
Hey, I got it right. We'll present the student report. Go ahead.
All right, so for some notable academic matters, first quarter just ended. Grades were submitted last Wednesday and now it's quarter two. Thanksgiving break is coming up. And the PSAT results were released and the SAT results from, I believe it was two Saturdays ago, will be released this Friday. For some fine arts activities, the SpongeBob musical is going to be happening December second, third, eighth, and ninth. And then the marching band placed fourth overall in their NESBA finals. Athletic matters, most of the fall sports are done now and winter sports meetings will be happening this week. So miscellaneous, student council is hosting the polar plunge for the Special Olympics. And I will be plunging into an ice bath for that. Donations go to Unified Sports and Special Olympics. There's a dodgeball tournament for the class of twenty twenty-five, November fifteenth. The girls' flag football juniors versus seniors game is the twenty-first this month. And then spirit week will be starting November sixteenth and ends pep rally next Wednesday. For my student work report, I brought my mortar and pestle from my ceramics class.
Nice.
Awesome.
Awesome.
That's amazing. I never have taken an art class before, so I was a little bit nervous taking ceramics. And then Ms. Atzlis really helped me along the way and I feel like I did a lot better than I thought I would.
Congratulations. That's great.
Are you going to use it or is it going to be decorative?
Um, I'm not sure how long Ms. Atzlis wants it on display. I had to steal it from the hallway display case.
Nice.
I think the janitor was like watching me trying to open it. But um, probably we'll keep it on my shelf. I don't think I'll put food in that.
I wonder, I wonder if it would be sturdy to stand up to some.
Some good herb grinding.
You know, just grinding up some fennel or something.
Yeah.
Anyway, sorry.
Where did you, you're sorry, where did you, where do you take the SAT? Where did you take your SATs?
Um, I took it in Stonem. And I know there's a lot of locations, I think like Stonem High School, Austin Prep, Phillips. Like they all, there's a lot of them.
Okay.
But um, they fill up really quick, so.
I'm, I'm just asking if Dr. Daly knows because during COVID, we offered it here and I'm just, you know.
I know the PSAT was here.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure there's enough opportunities around, so. Are PSATs subject matter ones? Certain subjects or?
It's practice.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a practice.
It's just pre, similar style.
Pre-test.
It can qualify you for scholarships, though. I don't think I, actually, I don't know how to check for that, but. I think if you do very well on it, you can be into national merit scholarships, similar to MCAS.
Okay. Excellent. Good. Any questions?
First off, I love the fact that anytime anybody says SpongeBob the Musical, just like uniform smiles. And I think it's also great that, uh, that Mr. Buckley's going to be doing the polar plunge. That's great that you volunteered.
I would.
I thought you were doing it.
I know, you're the volunteer.
He likes to be cold.
Oh, I have no problem with it. If I'm allowed, I'll do it.
I feel like I'm doing a po- polar plunge just stepping outside when it's thirty-five degrees like it was today.
That's great.
Yeah, it's that, it's that, in fine arts notes, the SpongeBob musical, that's what makes you smile, right?
Right. How can you say it and not smile?
It's awesome.
It's great. Well.
Thank you.
That was great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Dr. Daly tells me we have an order that I'm supposed to go in. Am I going the order on the agenda or?
Yep.
Okay. Good.
For once.
For once, yes. So we're going to begin with the biology study update and Mr. Kline, are you presenting on this?
I can.
We could all.
Thought I was told that the teacher's not here and so you were stepping in.
I'll open this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so essentially, this is a, this is maybe a quick item. We had a presentation last spring. Teacher Caitlin Jola Bear at the high school is doing a study.
Yeah.
I shared with you all the information again from that study. Basically, what this is, is another teacher, Ms. Flaherty, would like to do this with her classes as well, so.
Were there any changes or anything different to the exact same thing?
Nothing different. It's just an expansion of what we approved prior. But, you know, I spoke with Mr. Buckley and we felt it was appropriate since we approved it for that one class. It wasn't sort of for anybody that would come forward that we would just now. Maybe, maybe this one, we could say for the rest of this year.
For any teacher.
I don't think anyone else could join, but it might save us from having to come back if we just said we approve this for biology teachers in grade nine or something like that.
So if there were no changes, does anybody have any questions on the presentation or any of that? If not, I'll entertain a vote, vote to approve any teacher that wants to join this biology study update, joining it.
I will move that the committee vote to approve the biology study for the year ending twenty twenty-four for any of the biology teachers that may come forward. Second.
Excellent motion. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? Unanimous, five zero. Excellent presentation, Mr. Kline. Hanging on to MCAS and accountability and this actually probably is you, Mr. Kline.
Now you're in for it. Would you like me to control size? Would you like to come up here? Should we go around?
Do we have?
I'm not saying there's money in it.
You're forgetting us that quickly, but say it.
I'm going to go on a field trip.
You're going to go sit up there. Sit here? Okay, I'll sit with you. There you go.
See? Can't control.
I want to thank you for your time tonight. I think it's, you know, it's so interesting. I was listening to Sophie speak and I had an opportunity to talk to her for a couple of minutes before the meeting started. And I, I'm always impressed with how many different opportunities our students have in schools that help define their experience and to find their vision of what, what they want to do after school, like, you know, for college or post-career. So to come back and have to get into the state assessments, you know, and talk about achievement, accountability, which are things that people always discuss, the value and how districts are able to use this data wisely. I've always been super impressed with the way that our teachers have been open to look at data, to reflect, collaborate, and share best practices. And in my short time in this role, I've been really impressed in watching the leaders grow with their willingness to take risks with their student learning goals as part of educators, common assessments, and different work like that. So it's, I'm very pleased to share these results with you. You know, they came out early fall. The accountability information came out a little bit later. And I think you're well aware that we're a district that's in pretty good academic standing according to the state of Massachusetts. I always like to take the narrative of what the state and the Department of Education is kind of projecting and then apply that lens to our local data. So just the, my takeaway is from the state presentation. And I think our data strongly supports this, that the achievement slide from twenty nineteen into twenty twenty-one, when we, we didn't have school, regular schooling, is clearly ended. And there's quite a bit of good data as far as recovery. There's still some work to be done. We'll talk about that as we go through. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, the science results remain relatively unchanged. There are slight decreases that I don't, that doesn't really cause me concern. Grade three to five results signal a need to remain cautious about incoming testing grades. They're drawing out that our students coming into school now or the students that were home during the pandemic as, as infant toddlers, preschool experience, and what does that look like as far as literacy? And we do, we do see that in some of the data that we're, we're, we're recognizing as a district. And the state, this was the last bullet, is really more significant ground. I would disagree that we don't have significant ground to get to pre-pandemic. I think we're pretty close and we're even surpassed in a couple of areas. I present like this, the, the regular kind of just chart that kind of puts out, we kind of look at that last meeting or exceeding, this column right here. And so this is the state average, then it comes down right under would be our local averages. And this is ELA. And so you can see the, the work that we've done from twenty-two to twenty-three. You still see some of these lower numbers here from twenty nineteen. Now, I am going to tell you, twenty nineteen was a, an excellent testing year for North Running Public Schools. The LD Bachelor School was a school recognition for high achievement and growth. That was also, the year the little school was a national blue ribbon for high achievement. You know, so those have, but I also don't like to say that it's one class. Why shouldn't it be all classes that were able to achieve that high?
Mr. Kline?
Yep?
Just the, the NM and the PM and so I see the meter exceed, but what are the other?
Okay, so the not meeting?
Okay.
Partially meeting? Thank you. It's a good question. I jump right into the edge of speak and expect everybody there. Meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. And then that percentage, this is a big one for what we look at of meeting and exceeding. So we look at that, that's kind of like a large group put together through there.
Would you say that question was partially meeting expectations or?
No, that was, I was not, I was partially meeting expectations in my presentation. So we'll see if I can grow as the afternoon goes along. In ELA, we look at the data and, you know, right away from grade six in twenty nineteen, like you can see this, that's a large number. Similar to our other, this was an outlier as far as in twenty eighteen. I wrote it down just because I wanted to go back and make sure. Fifty-two was the meeting exceeding and in twenty seventeen it was fifty-nine percent. So that large number of seventy-six in twenty nineteen for grade six ELA was really a high achieve bump there as well. It's, it's a reasonable number that we should want to be targeting. But as far as that discrepancy, at least there's a little more consistency in, in the numbers as far as that goes. And that bumps down if you look as you go through that cohort, which we sometimes will follow to take a look. That would have been the grade ten test this year where they were eighty-three percent meter exceeds in twenty twenty-three. So those students are continually to, to meet the standards or exceed the standards at a pretty high level. ELA tends to be the bigger area right now that they're looking at as far as recovery. I think especially, we'll talk a lot about early literacy skills and intervention in K to two. I think that we are fortunate in our district to have data systems in place to understand where our students are performing from using the DIBELS in K to two. I Ready for Reading in grades two to eight. That allows us to track some data prior to an MCAS year. But the new professional development around science of reading and the argument of reading being developmental and how students grow and experience literature versus the need to provide intervention earlier to have a more significant impact on students' overall literacy skills. And I think that's something that we, we are aligned with and prepared to, to do that work with the data and our response to intervention and MTSS work that we've been doing in our district that you've been hearing about. Math, if you see, coming out of the twenty nineteen, that school year into that next, that's where they had the biggest concerns when school was disrupted because students stopped getting new instruction for math. Being back in school now for a couple of years, you've noticed that, that is kind of like an area where we talk about, it's corrected itself. The students are back on track. They're getting the content that they need at a high level with high-quality instructional materials and performing pretty close to where they were. The same in middle school as well. Not going to walk through all the numbers. It's just, you can write them down and holler out. Science, we continue to, to maintain that, that test as far as seeing new content. I think there was a little bit of regression from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, but we're back on par. And you see right away, you notice the grade five scores in North Running continue to really set a bar as far as if the state was ever looking at best practices for science instruction and high-quality instructional materials. Our elementary schools are, and our students are, are getting a top-notch science education in their fifth-grade classrooms and working with the science. The one thing with the science results and as far as trying to do more with the assessment, they're preparing to, they're piloting of ten thousand students to participate in a pilot test for science, which is they've amped up the performance tasks and using the technology of how students can manipulate and demonstrate their learning on the computer. And so that will probably be a full-field statewide pilot in twenty-four, twenty-five in grades five and eight, where we would see that test for the first time in pilot with a probably implementation the year after that. And then in grades nine and ten, they put ten, we, we give the test to ninth grade. You don't have a comparison to twenty nineteen because that's from your legacy to next-generation assessment when they updated the test laws. So for comparing, so this is, this is hyperlinked. So you have this as part of the agenda right where it says data. That's the visual with more of the bars. It's just a different way to look at the data if you ever, when it breaks down by grade level. And you can see it just a different way. For us, you know, I think that we're, we're really in a very, very good place. I think the work that we're doing for professional development and understanding the need to provide students with more intervention in earlier grades could shift some of that grade three data and kind of change that baseline. So we're, we're, we're working together with the schools and the literacy leaders and how we use the DIBELS data, how we communicate to families if they're concerned about their reading performance from kindergarten to, to grade three. And then also requires us to articulate what those interventions would look like and what we're doing differently to try to move that needle and try to engage our families to work with us to move those stu- students forward. As I mentioned, the science results are in a good place. We look at our dark districts at all levels. We're right where we need to be and exceeding that at the elementary level. Talked about the early intervention in K, K to two. We're doing a lot of professional development with early literacy, science of reading. We're piloting a new curriculum, K to one, and looking at using our current resources or advocating for additional resources to help us with those interventions in K to two. At all the schools, this is where we talk about the work that our administration and our curriculum leaders and our educators do a lot of work. They've all had time to review the data, to analyze it from questions that continue to present a problem. They've even had the freedom to navigate the bar of discrepancy between local data and state data because it's not the same at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So challenging them to look at the data and kind of say, okay, what jumps out as you is something when you're reflecting upon it to be able to do. They continue to look very closely at all the subgroups, which is great, between high needs and, and students with disabilities, different race, ethnic, socioeconomic, everything as far as performance on our, our tests. I think that we've met with all the administrative team and data leaders. Written response tends to be a big concern and understanding. I think we talked about it last year. And still doing more work with the release questions from the state, the anchors that they have, and then applying it from K to, well, grades three to ten, but then working backwards to set our own for, especially for grade two. Review cycles are very important. In elementary schools, we have the luxury of taking time and understanding and assessment and providing mini reviews, like of what we, in fourth grade, we know what was hard in third grade. So we can reteach some of those third-grade standards just to kind of have the students see them again so they're better prepared to answer those questions the next time. We're really trying to look at that in a six to, to ten model, especially in science where you only see the test in grades five, eight, and then again in nine. Nine's a little bit different because it's just that biology test, so that content's a little bit different where five and eight kind of develop everything. And then progress monitoring in between. You know, in our school improvement plans, we deal with a lot of information using I Ready data. We have, we're piloting some of the I Ready data in grade nine in math to kind of see if that will help educators monitor progress from eighth grade to tenth grade when they take the test again. We felt like that would be a nice bridge to give them a little bit of information of how they come in in ninth grade, take that test, and then how to be able to, to monitor the growth. So the achievement is very high, hitting most of our academic targets that you'll see, which kind of goes into your accountability results. So now they take how well you've done and all your assessments and all your subgroups and all your areas. If you go to high school, you go to advanced placement courses. And all schools, they deal with chronic absenteeism is one that you hear a big one about in, in that work through there. And so for us, just in the work that we've done since, in twenty nineteen and, and really stayed the course through the pandemic until to, you know, until now, which is stuff that we should be proud of, is the commitment of the educator, their, their constant drive for best practices and sharing, reflection, collaboration, how they work together at grade levels and with departments. And then that shared responsibility is something that we're really tapping into. I think especially as you go six to twelve, if I'm the ELA teacher and I have an ELA MCAS test and I teach social studies, how can I be responsible for that work? And having, engaging these educators in conversations, especially when we talk about written response and what we're trying to move forward. It's been really refreshing watching teachers be comfortable engaging in those conversations and willing to take on more on their plate to improve student learning in some of these other subjects. Student engagement tends to be one of the big ones that we're, we continue to focus on. Access to challenging and relevant content, materials to engage student curiosity, learning, and growth, right? We, we talk about even the MCAS test itself. You talk about a level of engagement, right? In high school, the engagement's usually a little bit higher because it's a pretty high-stakes test in tenth grade. You know, if you're a middle school student, what is your level of engagement in a test and, and in a computer and, and to kind of engage that? So we have to balance that out with what we're getting on a day-to-day and what students are showing in the classrooms. And then, like I said, the data analysis work that we're doing now is, is really, it would just come a long way. I think at the elementary level, we're able to have conversations and not try to defend or attack a test question or whatever, and be able to ask better questions. To be able to look at what data we have, because we have, we, we've added more data from, between what the state requires us to have and what we put in and what data we want. And that really, that's the hardest one because there's always a lot of data that we want. You know, we talk about the SEL data with the vocal, they're just releasing that information. I hope to be able to bring some of that back, which we'll then talk about, some of the SEL's work that we've done, the different surveys that teachers are creating to get feedback from students about their practice and how they learn and how they want to learn. There's a lot of data that teachers are working on to collect to drive their instructional practice. So this is the first year we've had accountability measures fully implemented since twenty nineteen. Like a little score sheet as far as what that would look like. So we had accountability percentile and progress towards targets. The state would set benchmarks. It'd set a year that they'd take the test. Then they would set your, your benchmarks of what you're trying to move forward to. And they did that very, very late last year. To the, it was so late that there was nothing that we could have done to impact the twenty-three results to influence that result. It was really just kind of dice. Yes.
Just to clarify, this doesn't mean we didn't hit it. It means it didn't exist.
No, right, yeah, yeah, no, no.
There was no measure. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. And so we have that and then you go through. In, in twenty-two, they did give school accountability percentiles just to give you kind of like a little bit of work of where you were, but they didn't give you the target work that went along with it. And then all schools receive an overall accountability classification that describes the need for assistance or intervention. And then they give an indicator ranging from one to ninety-nine percentile compared to schools just like schools. We go through here. We talk about some of our schools, the, and one of the reasons we have federal designation. This is all kind of federal compliance issues too with the accountability. It's not just the state of Massachusetts in doing that. And as part of those requirements, it's to recognize schools of recognition as well as schools of corrective action. And as I mentioned in twenty nineteen and then again in twenty twenty-three, the LD Bachelor School was recognized as a school of recognition. This is what the twenty twenty-three official accountability report, there is so much that you can dive into and get at so many levels. This is a screenshot, not an interactive. But if you see over here, here's, none of our schools are, are requiring assistance or intervention from the state, which is great. And you can see our school accountability percentiles as compared. All three elementary schools are well above the ninety percentile. The middle school is just over that eighty percentile, eighty-two, and the high school just dipped right below at seventy-nine on the accountability percentile. I will say that the high school scores are a lot higher in achievement and chronic absenteeism. And even doing the math to figure that out, one of the things they're looking at is student growth percentile. That kind of closes out. But just to kind of ballpark that accountability from the last time, these were the numbers that came out in twenty nineteen. So I just wanted to kind of keep that little story. I think it's probably, I hope, the last time that I'm going this far back and just kind of keep moving forward with new information and how we want to respond to it in the future. But this is where we were. So you can see those numbers. There's not a lot of difference. And there's so many little factors that could tweak that one way or the other for the accountability. So when we talk about full recovery from twenty nineteen, I would say we're, we're, we're pretty close to being able to say the conversations that we're having might be more to do with cohort with kids and the work that we do. And then just taking away, this is, that's another link that's in your agenda that would take you to that where you can drill down as far as you want. North Running Public Schools continue to perform well as related to state assessments and accountability measures. I would say very well, but I like to be modest. The district will continue to use data to celebrate the hard work of all stakeholders. I know that every single school took time to look at data and find areas that they should be really proud of because of the efforts they've made to improve student learning. And that was one of our focuses at our teacher leadership meeting in August. And then we rolled that right into the first day, coming back to school, and we'll continue to do that. It's important. Sometimes you feel like when you're having the data conversations, you're just having the data conversations to find the areas to improve. But there's so much to celebrate in what we're doing in our classrooms as far as achievement and growth that we need to be able to celebrate. And then the next part is be able to use it to find that improvement and growth. Our, we're really becoming skilled at asking the right questions when something doesn't look right. And they do it to a very small percentile because they know that work will impact the larger good at all levels. I think everywhere, Kate, you know, like I said, the writing is going to be something that we're going to continue to focus on internally to see if we can come up with some common assessments and mechanisms to create, I don't want to say portfolio, but some measurement of growth over the longevity of the experience. Elementary schools will continue to monitor student achievement in response to interventions through MTSS with a big focus on early literacy, using that grade three data and students writing. North Reading Middle School has a lot of data that they've celebrated. They want to use and share their best practices. They want to continue to focus on their subgroups. They're really pleased with some of the work they've done in starting to look at the subgroup of students with disabilities. But they really want to focus on the growth for students with disabilities and try to close that gap between students identified on special education and all students to see if that growth percentile can increase. And then the high school is saying they'll continue to look. They've done some really nice work with their subgroups, their high needs and their, their students with disabilities. They want to continue to focus on student achievement. Increase percentiles for students meeting and exceeding expectations. And then progress monitoring and understanding student growth was really one of the things that the high school wanted to focus on. Like I said earlier, that split from grade eight, they don't get that growth percentile is grades nine and 10. So they're taking a two-year from where the, and a lot happens in that period of time. So they want to kind of use some progress monitoring in there to help them with that.
Mr. Clean.
Yep.
Going back to the second bullet, I think you said something that I want to make sure I understand. I think it's important. You said that drilling down into what may be a singular situation is important in that it can inform all of your work. Didn't say that very well. Maybe you can restate it again.
Probably not, but I could try. I went, a lot of times when we're looking to move the needle in growth and achievement, we're looking at small pockets of students.
Right.
And you can drill down pretty easily to the, almost to the individual student.
Yep.
And then create these plans, you know, in the high school, you'd call it a student success plan, but we kind of model that in all buildings and kind of saying, okay, here's where we are. Here's what we need to do. And then we, we then will use our mid-year data, which comes at the end of the January from classroom observation, common assessments, midterm finals, iReady, anything else that we're collecting again in the middle of the year. And then make another prescription that helps students prepare for.
And, but that, but that that work also helps inform and approve the overall, every student's work.
Without a doubt.
Not just the individual or group, small group of students you're looking at.
Every day, especially if we're ever looking at item analysis or work like that. The one thing we always take away or we continue to struggle with. And we know why. Poetry, geometry, things that come up in units once and then you're not always using throughout your school, you know, so the retention and the recall isn't always as fluent as we would like it to be. And that's when we talk about those review cycles, trying to figure out how to get more of this content to students in a more regular basis so they can keep those skills sharp. That's the 30,000 level presentation of the district.
Question.
I, I would say that while you're thanking everybody else's attention to, to metrics, I think it comes a lot from the top down because I think you guys focus on metrics. Now, I think it's not to take anything away from anybody else, but I think I'm congratulating you guys because that's the environment you guys foster. So I just want to say that's appreciated.
Yeah, I think the, the thing I take away the most from what your opening comments are is that basically that very thing, which is I mean, the danger is that there's a group of people at the district level are just looking at data and that data doesn't really flow down into, into the work that the teachers are doing. And, and your, your guys model, your guys, that's the official term, your guys.
Great, great grammar.
Yeah. Has, has, has been to get that work, get that data down and get people excited about it. And it sounds like they are willingly excited too, so which is also important.
If I could, just to, I want to thank Mr. Clean for really leading this work in the what we do though, that, just to explain, the two of us go, and we appreciate that this presentation comes now. Doesn't come out a day or two after the data's out there. Because we don't want this to be the two of us sitting down and looking at it and telling you what we saw. We listen and we listen to the schools and he's heard me say this now five times, but the school, the scores are good. MCAS scores are good and I think it's a chicken or the egg because we're not resting on our laurels. Every school, schools that are in the 90th, 95th percentile are coming up with action plans around all these ideas. And I think, I think that's why we're good. And then it, you know, it's, it's a cycle. We have a data leader who is a teacher with an additional stipend. We have curriculum leaders. We have principals and what the sense I'm getting is we've done this for many years now. They complete a unified response to MCAS, but the conversations are not about MCAS, honestly, when we're there. We talk about MCAS, we talk about data, but we talk about what we're doing with literacy, what we're doing with reading, how we're using intervention blocks, power blocks, MTSS time. It, it's really a conversation about improving everything across the board. And MCAS is going to take care of itself because we're becoming better reason writers and I'm seeing that more and more now than ever. And, and it really is about every teacher coming at this and working on, not just looking at MCAS scores, but how we're talking about student learning and it's, we're really making progress. And it's, it's great. And the MCAS data is helpful to us. When people say to me, you know, do you support MCAS? Should it be gone? We keep it in a proper perspective in this district and you do, the community does. It has a value to us. It's one pointed data and we keep that in perspective, but it helps keep us on pace along with common assessments and other things. Assessment has a value, right? Overtesting, that's where it gets controversial, but that's my two cents on that. But thank you for leading that and thank you to everyone here for letting us present this in November when we've had time to listen, bring it back together. What we're presenting tonight is really a consensus of what we've seen at all five schools. And it's not just, you know, a gut reaction to initial data. So thank you.
Very good.
This is fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Clean. Are you, who's giving the STEM coordinator?
Do you want to touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, if, I'll, I'll take a
Yeah.
The presentation is there.
Yes.
Unfortunately, Michelle was unable to attend this evening. If I can go through it, it did review some of the STEM work that she was working with the STEM week in October. And at that same time, I want to plug that the Hood School is having their STEM, I think they're esteemed night, Thursday night at the Hood School. I think it's at six.
Yep.
But you know, for me, I'd, I'd rather let Michelle connect to that work because I, I look at how well she has done in her transition to this position as it was a new position for the district. You know, she really was able to, being a former high school educator, was able to make immediate connections with both departments, working in the math and having strong relationships with the science educators. So she became an immediate resource and advocate for those departments and the work that they're doing and committed herself to building the relationships with those educators at the middle school. So knowing the work that she has done, meeting with teachers, being in classrooms, observing, providing feedback, both for teachers that are on her caseload and teachers that aren't, has immediately impacted conversations about content, especially as we start to look at six to 12 in vertical alignment and working on the scope and sequence and the curriculum mapping that's happening both at the middle school and high school has been has been remarkable. The amount of work that she's been able to undertake on that level in a, in a short period of time. The STEM coordinator position itself, when we talk about the opportunities to offer our students more for science, technology, engineering and mathematics is, is probably a little bit of a broader subject. And so starting with a STEM week that was pretty quick into her tenure, but looking to try to provide opportunities, working with teachers to see what students band with and opportunities were out there. She's doing a ton of what is out in the local communities, the local universities, bringing them to teachers, trying to get them excited, trying to get them to small groups of students to so that we can get vans and go out. So that's a, that's a longer term goal that should be able to talk about what her defining vision is as that goes, because I think that's one big part of this position. But her work in the six to 12 science and math and the first 50 day, what, what day of school? I wish I was in elementary school and I could tell you exactly what day it is. It has been remarkable. So I know she was disappointed not to be able to be here this evening. I know that there's meetings coming up that she can come because she could probably speak to just about anything on the agenda on a regular basis. So please take a look at the slideshow. I'm going to let her, she put that together.
Yep.
I'll let her review it when she comes. But I just wanted to kind of take that quick second to, to recognize her work and inform the community of the value that we're getting from that, that newly appointed position.
That's great. Yeah, I was really looking forward to hearing her. So hopefully maybe after, you know, the new year, she can come back or.
Yeah.
And when she sent her like a community email, I want to say maybe four weeks ago. I got so many, I got so much feedback from that, people, because I had been talking about how this was something that had been important to the school committee. And I got so much feedback, so positive from different members of the community when she sent that email and people are excited to see what she's doing and yeah, so.
Thank you.
We're excited to see what she's doing too.
So I'll add it to a future agenda when she's able to attend. It was a last minute sort of. This happens.
Okay. Moving on, data, nothing packs a room like MCAS accountability and data privacy.
I know. Where are all the people?
I think I was reviewing this when you were editing it last night.
I know. I saw you hop on there. I'm like, I better spice it up here. Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about data privacy. Probably a long time coming. We've done a lot of work in the district. I want to go over that work and then kind of, you know, discuss some of the changes Google's been making related to data privacy. So just to give you an introduction of the work we've done, we've been taking an active role in protecting student data privacy. What I mean by active is that this was a big movement in Massachusetts. Started like 2018-ish with Cambridge Public Schools. And it's a homegrown effort that grew nationally to begin protecting student data with data privacy agreements in Massachusetts and California, kind of leading the way with asking educational technology vendors to sign data privacy contracts, ensuring the safe distribution of data when they acquire it. We've been a member of a partnership with Tech, the Education Collaborative since 2019. We've been actively, since then, we actively review our NRPS data systems and educational apps, resources and software for privacy. So we're about, you know, four years running and my team has gotten very fluid in our processes as well. And of course, the value of strong data privacy in the district is that we do ensure data internal and external integrity. Student accounts, teacher accounts, you know, staff accounts in and out of the, in and out of our data dashboards essentially. The software we use, the vendors we work with. And it's all about protecting personally identifiable information, which is emails, names, anything tied to that information. So just to give you a little overview of our partnerships with Tech, I included, you know, a couple links to their sites if you're interested in checking them out. The one that I kind of want to show you that kind of showcases our work the most is this is our, our district's our district page, which has all of our current data privacy contracts. So I'm just going to scroll over here. So this is all listed in alphabetical order. All the districts that are part of Tech and part of this partnership essentially have a page like this. So our educators, my digital learning team can review this page, search and application not only amongst our own district if we have a privacy contract, but also other districts nationally, which is very powerful. If a teacher asks about something, we can check it here. We can check it across the state. Lets us know if it's approved, unapproved and why it's not approved. You know, for example, Adobe Spark, it says not approved, but we actually can use it because we actually manage the data ourselves. And that's some of the fine nuances. And so what I've learned through the process of the last four years is a lot of fine nuances to all the relationships with data privacy. Like with Adobe, Adobe, it's fine if you manage the data itself because you're hosting it all internally. But as you can see with many of these applications, they are very active with signing policies. And you can actually assort them by active agreement. So if you're ever interested in checking this site out and just seeing, these are all sites that over the past four years, we've actively sought contracts for to protect student data privacy. All alphabetized. And if, even if you need a specific resource for a specific instructional purpose, you can come here and search that. But we're always working with them, sending them requests, updating when they expire and also discussing things when we have someone turn something down. So I find that to be a, a great resource for us.
Dr. Downs, is it, is it, am I right in saying, seeing that there were potentially hundreds of, of, that we're actively involved with?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Hundred and ninety.
Yeah, hundreds. All different grade levels.
Yep.
All different levels of usage. You know? And, you know, that, that becomes the challenge really, you know, just making sure that we're staying up to date. We get notifications on when the contracts expire. I go in and I'm able to enable the, the re-sign of the contract very quickly. They have a team of a couple of people that I'm able to ask questions about when we, we get instances come up where the, or we want to request a contract that, you know, on something that we're kind of curious why someone won't sign, you know, things like that. But yeah, hundreds in here. So if you ever check this out, just note that you can, you can sort it by software name, agreement status, type, grade level, content area. So it's a great word. They also give you the ability to search in the national database and also visit their homepage from here. So it's just, this is kind of like our home base where people can kind of check things out and see what we have cooking in terms of privacy and what we've been working on for agreements. And essentially any district that initiates an agreement with a, with a vendor, we can piggyback on their agreement. So if Natick, for example, has an agreement with a specific piece of software, we can piggyback and we can sign our own. And what they have is they have districts that initiate specific agreements. And then all the other districts can, can kind of piggyback on that agreement.
Is that why, like when I'm clicking on some of these agreements, it says it's with Hopping, Hopping Contain or something else?
Yep. So exactly. So yeah, so that comes in handy too, because some of my team, if they get a request, can then check the Massachusetts database and see if, oh, another district has it. It'd be very easy to piggyback on that agreement. So essentially in this presentation, I'm going to give you a little overview of our introduction to Google's new consent requirements, a little bit of our history with Google, our data sharing with Google and some of the updates around their policies. So just to give you a little framework of our environment, kind of like how data fits within this environment. You know, we've been well supported by the community and everybody with their devices. Chromebook one-to-one learning program, K-12, we have multimedia labs, teacher laptops, professional staff computers. Speaking, you know, different types of devices and different types of learning spaces, special education devices, assistive technology. All of these essentially use a lot of different applications going in and out. About three years ago, I identified digital learning core apps. And those are applications that we have digital privacy agreements in place. And what the goal was with that was that those apps are also aligned with very specific instructional goals for teachers. So if they were looking for doing something very specific, they had a very specific list they could go to immediately and feel like I can use things on here and get very familiar with those tools. We also have, of course, our digital assessments, MCAS, iReady, Dibbles, WeDostamp, many more. That's all data going in and out, you know, with these different vendors. So another thing that we have to always kind of track in terms of privacy. With Google, we've been a Google Apps for Districts since 2013. We moved from the free to paid services in 2021, right after the pandemic. They shifted their pricing model where they moved a lot of their best features that they had added during the pandemic to this new model. And a big shift for us, but it also enabled us to kind of sustain the types of experiences in teaching and learning that we kind of benefited from working in that environment. Now, what they're doing here is that for Google Education, they've kind of started to split their services between core and additional services. So Google provides core services and had provided access to the additional services integrated with the core services since we started using them back in 2013. So essentially there's core educational services and they've broken off this additional service. So essentially, there's core educational services and they've broken off this additional services. So what I've done here is I've linked to the core and different services. So so on the left is the core services, assignments, calendar, classroom, cloud search, drive and docs, Gmail, Google Chat. Some of the stuff a lot of students use every day, Google Meet, Jamboard, Keep, Migrate, Task Sites. The additional services on the right are additional services. These are services that they, I'll, I'll show you some of the data sharing in a slide I prep for that. But these are services that they've identified as additional services that we're going to be looking for consent, parental guardian consent for. So I'll revisit this slide in just a moment. Make sure I go back the right way.
Just hit the back button?
So, so I've broken that out at the back just to like you can revisit that slide as we need to. So of course, the importance of data privacy, trust and confidence, those applications and resources that we're working with. We want to feel like we have a good relationship with them. It's very important that vendors kind of show that good faith, especially working with students in an educational environment around data privacy. And of course, that does sustain, you know, us protecting students' identity, even if it is a Gmail address, it's still their identity created for them within the district. And also it's, I think it's important that we, when working with vendors, that we get the information around how they're sharing data. So all of this, all comes through, through the data privacy contracts and our relationship with working with the vendors to get these contracts. So our current process with collecting current data privacy contracts is educators submit a request form, or they can speak with a specialist around using a specific resource. Our team then reviews the resource and determines if a data privacy contract exists. And that is based on our existing policies in the state with the vendor, or one needs to be requested through our partnership. If the vendor does not sign the agreement, the resource is listed as unapproved. If an educator still does want to use something that's unapproved, it is possible, but that classroom teacher needs to request consent from the parents specifically for the use of that resource. We have another process for that. And, but in that process, they also have to provide an alternative as opposed to the resource that was given.
Has that occasion happened?
Oh, yep, yep. Multiple times. We have a couple of resources that elementary and, you know, middle school. Definitely they, they were using the resource years ago and, you know, as soon as data privacy kind of picked up, you know, they, they needed to kind of get that piece in place.
And at the end of this, we have a vote to approve something. Is it just to approve the current policy? Or is it, are there other things that we're going to be able to approve?
It's another, other piece. Yep. So just to give you, this is just to give you a background.
Background, yeah.
From two thousand and nineteen. So Google's policy changes. Google has requested parental guardian consent for the additional services that are included in the Google Apps for Education platform. This includes the core and additional services I just showed. I've also included the Google for Education privacy policy, which outlines the different privacy levels between the two types of applications. So essentially what this means for us in the coming year is that since we have an existing data privacy in place, agreement in place with Google Apps for Education for the core services, there's no need to get consent. That's all covered under that data privacy agreement. Parental consent needs to be obtained for the additional services. Those are those services on the right side. Within the consent, parents' guardians will have the option to provide consent for the additional services recommended by the school or selected specific additional services they did not consent to. So what we're essentially trying to do is give parents an option. If they want their student to have YouTube or have Translate or not have those options, that they can select or unselect those options. The digital learning team will then review the consents and ensure the results of the consent forms are enabled or disabled within the students' accounts. Educators will be notified of the access of specific resources for specific students. And that's kind of a critical part because we want the teachers in the classroom to be aware if a student doesn't have access to a specific resource that maybe others do. So they can provide options.
I have a question and maybe this isn't the right time for this question, but what is a scenario you think or that you would imagine where a parent would? And I, I see with YouTube, but I assume that YouTube on the.
No ads.
There's, yeah, there's some, some parameters there. But are there any things, are there any other things here, I'm not familiar with all these, where you would see a reason that a parent would, would opt out?
Um, no.
Any, like any collection of, I'm looking at like Google Maps or like something like that, is that, that where there's, you know, people are inputting their home or something like that? Is there any scenario where you think people would object?
No, I'm, no, and I, I make that kind of decision based on the privacy agreement, policy that Google placed back on this slide.
I might be stealing his thunder, but we're very hopeful that people will, will approve. And if they have questions, they'll reach out to us. But we just want to be fully transparent in it and not just assume that people want.
And, and there'll be an explanation, for example, like again with the YouTube, because I know a lot of people don't let their kids use YouTube.
Exactly, yeah. We, we have a very specific explanation and we're planning, it's, I'm feeling your thunder a little bit, but we will do some program. What we don't want to do, we don't want to pull the rug out for the teachers or the students with accounts that they have. But we want to get out ahead of it. We want to do this. We'll have an opportunity for parents to, to come into like a forum to ask some questions if they have them. And also we'll have some documentation. But yeah, that, that's one that would jump into me. Yeah, I don't want my kid on YouTube, but it's very much the school version is very filtered.
And I get the school version at home for my kids because they drive from the scene wanting it.
You can, you can set up a lot of controls.
Transparency too.
I did it too late though. Now my kids won't watch that. They won't even use the device.
No, I haven't, but it's like, they won't let them see anything and they're like, oh, this is so lame.
I also think this is a big value now in the vendors. I know, feel this too, in being able to sign a data privacy contract with the transparency around how they're sharing the data. So, you know, a big part of this is, you know, I kind of, of course, I ask myself the same question you ask yourself, like, what are they doing? And, and Google clearly outlines it here in their privacy policy, what we collect and how we use it. And one of the biggest lines they have in this policy is they, they will never share any data across any of their apps without your consent. Specifically outside. So they're pretty specific about that in here. And that's, this is something that I want to, you know, when I do my reach out to the parents in the community who are interested in learning more about this. Like go over this and just kind of reassure them about this policy because it kind of goes through both the core and the additional services. So that's the next steps. So just to give you an idea of the Google data sharing model, because I know they, they have, you know, they have their language themselves. So I figured I'd have a graphic here. You know, basically, you know, blue dots, the concept of how they share. And on the left side is the additional services and what some of those are, YouTube, Blogger, Google Analytics, Google Cloud Platform. And how they're sharing data off those additional services are, they are different than core services. They're governed by additional terms and policies specific to those services, and they're also optional for districts. Now, on the other side, we have the G Suite for Education, which includes the classroom forms, sheets, all the things that students use really daily. And then their sharing is a little bit more complicated in that there's data sharing with Google services that are controlled by policies in our backside. But also, we're also trying to be compliant with educational standards. And then we also have third-party applications. I think we're all familiar with signing in with SSO or doing a quick login, you know, and then also being able to access an app. That's one of the ways that data is shared, is through single sign-on and also through additional ways of accessing applications. So that, you know, those, those third-party applications also require additional approval, also have their own privacy policies. So we're also, that's another reason for ensuring the data privacy contracts with the third-party vendors is that we have contracts with those people that we're also providing the SSO for moving forwards. That's kind of the other side of how those services connect. So process updates that we're looking at, current and future, communicate to NRPS parents, educators, students and staff. The updates to new and existing data privacy practices. I think some parents might not even know that we do do a lot of work on the backside to make sure this stuff is happening. We're always trying to stay on top of it. It's always kind of a moving target, you know, just that stuff is changing all the time. Contracts are changing all the time. People want to use new things all the time. We want to acquire consents and modify accounts for services that are consented to. Continue to review, monitor and update data privacy practice to ensure best practices, of course, and also plan to continue, you know, for a continued professional development and transparency. You know, and it's not the most exciting topic in the world and teachers don't like always hear like something's not approved or something else, but there is really an option for almost everything. Do you have a question? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
No.
So we want to continue to review our third-party applications with sync to our Google domain and ensure these applications meet our data privacy and security requirements. We want to provide, continue to provide additional communication, professional developments and updates related to data privacy, security to all stakeholders. And continue to develop partnerships and vendor relationships and inform our data privacy practices. So, you know, we're really always, always trying to stay on top of it. I talked to members of my team today just about what we could potentially do even in the future to have additional professional development just for their knowledge base because it does take people learning about things constantly and also thinking about the implications of their actions when sharing different spreadsheets, data, different places. You know, just to be careful and think about the data privacy piece of this all.
Actually, Dr. Downs, I had one question. So with the devices, obviously we have devices of different ages. So are all the devices able to support the newer apps that you're using now or are we having issues?
Yep, they've all, actually, Google extended their updates for older devices, which is great. It actually prolonged some life for some older devices to move to new versions of Chrome, which has been great.
That's certainly something we want to avoid. You don't, you don't want to have a device that can't update to the.
Yeah, our, our actual rollout plans are all based on Google's end of life, based on their ability to handle specific operating systems.
So what, what's the outer limit on that right now, like six?
They added ten years to any device purchased, I believe, actually twenty twenty-one. So devices we purchased in the past two years now have an additional ten years of life, which was a great move by Google to keep everyone kind of using their devices. But it also helped us, you know, kind of plan for the future better and to be able to have students use a great device that updates everything that it needs to. And it's very important for MCAS and topics like that. We want students to be able to use, because every year that MCAS comes out, a new version of Chrome comes out that needs to support that version of MCAS.
And what's the longest we're using them right now? Because I know we recycle some of the old ones to the.
How long?
So they get it in a certain grade.
Oh, so what we do is we.
We're doing like ten years now?
Yeah, we shift down. So when we replenish a grade at six or seven and we want to get them, our general goal is to get them through graduation with the best device possible.
Yeah.
And then devices that are still well-functioning devices, we provide to K and one, up to two. And then at grade three, when we know MCAS is starting, that's when we start the recycle level two. So it's a balance of replenishing usually middle school. Something they have a great end of life to get them all the way through high school, but then also something in third grade to get them up through middle school.
Thank you.
So the cycle kind of starts in two places to kind of get the best life for those devices.
And so life cycle is more determined, thanks to that extension of, of the, of the support, the life cycle is more determined by the physical condition of the unit as opposed to.
Yes, yeah.
The support provided by the, by the software vendor.
Yes, yeah, exactly. The updates actually extend the life more than maybe you might see, maybe this might look a couple of years older, but it still runs the same version.
Yeah, it was five to six years and that was a very different formula. So we've kind of, got a little wiggle room now with that.
I mean, as you say, to their benefit, but that, that's okay. It was to, to the district's benefit as well.
And another additional benefit, even when we recycle those devices, we were able to claim the management, which is usually twenty-five to thirty dollars per device. So whenever we looked to update and purchase new devices, that's an additional cost we don't have to have. We can use those older licenses. So I've just mapped out a little task phase action piece of this. Essentially notify staff and school committee of Google's new policy changes. Begin drafting consent forms and informational materials for parents. Set up a cross-functional team to manage the consent process essentially. You know, that piece is really my team. After consents go out, seeing what, how they come back in, what's needed, how, what types of updates we need to make in the background. I do want to develop and distribute a guide on all of Google's changes to educators so they're aware of how these changes may affect them. I do want to host an informational webinar for parents and community who are interested in joining me and just talking about, you know, what's going on and what might, might be interested in learning about. And I also want to continue, I mean, I have done professional development in the district related to data privacy, just continue with that pattern. Just to keep people informed, let them know, because that's really where it starts with a lot of the teachers, just letting them know our practices. So when they want to use something, they know how to reach out and what they're, they're looking for. Begin privacy impact assessments. Essentially if things become unapproved, what do we want to do to support teachers or educators or students in light of that? And of course, moving forward, finalize and approve any updated digital privacy policies that we may be using and the forms we're using. You know, ultimately, when I say roll out a consent management platform, that's just a backend piece of software that allows me, let me know what was signed off on, what it is, what's been, you know, what people are consenting to and what hasn't been consented to. Collect the consents. Also at this point, you know, additional professional development is always huge with this. Complete collection of parental consents within the academic year, make sure we get everything in, review and refine the consent process based on feedback after we've, we've done one full round. And integrate lesson plan in the curriculum for digital citizenship. And many of this stuff is already included in the digital citizenship curriculum. It may just be brought to a higher light, just, you know, how students' personal information is shared and, you know, how they want to, you know, make sure even if they're working outside of our Google domain, how they want to protect themselves. But at the end of the day, this process does keep us in the flow of regular views of privacies and consent forms. Keeps us on our toes with making sure we keep everything in line and keep, you know, and the big thing is awareness and transparency. I think that's the big part of this, is making sure that people are aware of why we're doing what we're doing and, and what it means to their access to resources.
So I have a question and then a half-serious, half-joking idea. So the, the, the question first is, how does North Reading compare, as you know, compared to other districts? I mean, like how are we doing in terms of like in compliance? I mean, are we ahead of, are we ahead of a lot of other districts?
I think I'm the only district who's at this stage.
Okay.
So this is kind of what, I mean, just let me say, this is kind of why I wanted him to present here tonight because people who live, work, maybe are teachers in other districts that are parents here are going to say, but I'm using Khan Academy all the time. Why can't I, right? So we, we've got the core apps piece, we've got parental consent for these additional ones. But then there's going to be some other ones that they haven't signed a privacy agreement that we're going to say, you can't use that anymore. But there's going to be another step. We don't want to just pull the rug out. We're going to say to those teachers, either here's an alternative, or if you need to keep using this, you're going to have to get consent from that class or from your students. So parents might be seeing that too, like, and it doesn't mean necessarily something wrong. For whatever reason, they're not signing that privacy agreement. So we just need to know what that is. And so that, that's going to be a difficult perception piece that like there's actually something dangerous or wrong with it. I don't think that that's the case, but and, and millions of people around the world are using Khan Academy, but for whatever reason, they won't sign the Massachusetts privacy agreement, right? So we just want to be transparent and say, we're going to keep using it. We think it's safe. However, we want to be transparent about it. What Google's done is they've said, it's sort of on you to keep that. Like, we're not going to cover it in our terms. And we're just saying, we, we don't just want to do that willy-nilly. We want to make sure we're clear about it. But our hope again is that people continue to, these are, these are not new. These are apps that we've been using for years. We think they're safe. We think they're very productive. So that, I hope that helped to clarify.
No, it does. And, and so my idea, which is probably the less joking now, the, one of the school committee's goals this year is to try to do professional development. We haven't done it the last few years. And we've talked about like maybe going to, you know, Mass Association School Committees and trying to get something to present on. This seems like the sort of thing that would actually be interesting to even think about like what district policies you should have around data privacy and student protection. And you were thinking about doing a webinar and presenting to, you know, educators, maybe broadly, and parents. I don't know how many people you're going to get, but I wonder if it was even incorporated with the school committee members to talk even a little bit higher at what district policy should be. And that could be something that we could even present to neighboring communities and invite school committee members and it's just an idea for like, and, and we've kind of assigned it to, I don't know who, but um.
I think I'm.
I think Rich and Noel maybe are on that.
I thought we were developing ourselves, not other people.
But, but again, we can do it like for whatever. I mean, I think we were talking about doing something and inviting some other districts there. This might be a sort of thing that could actually align pretty well. And it also helps to kind of shine a spotlight in what we're doing in North Reading. So just an idea out there, like, again, just, just a thought, like if you're going to be doing it anyways, maybe even broaden it slightly more to the district level about like what the policy should be, and then we could kind of align around that, but just a thought to throw out there.
No, it's a good thought. There are a lot of districts involved with Tech. I think the difference with the Google shift is that, I mean, I'll be honest, I put it out on my listserv of how are people handling this? I got like crickets.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was friendly with, you know, a local other tech director and he had all sorts of questions for me. And I'm like, well, look at what they're saying. You know, and, you know, we kind of started the conversation, you know, we kind of kicked around ideas. And I was a little bit further down the process of like, okay, this is what we want to, you know, try to include. This is what we might not want to include. And I was a little bit further down the process of like, okay, this is what we want to, you know, try to include. This is what we might not want to include. I think, I think this is going to be kind of par for the course too. So like, I think it's something people have to kind of get used to talking about. And then it also, it definitely helps the relationships with these companies in terms of awareness. Once they know that people are talking about it, they've just become so much more open to, okay, we'll sign the privacy policy. Because they come around sometimes after years of not wanting to sign and being like, okay, we're going to sign now.
Yeah. Well, and, and making sure that our, our district policies for the school committee are, are updated to include what we're doing and again, ma- maybe it's just something that you do for the other thing and it could be repurposed and we could, could do it, but just one idea out there because I'm just sitting here thinking like, okay, and if I'm in a district, like, what do we have to do to our policy to make sure that we, you know, are in alignment with everything, so.
Yeah, and it's, this is always changing, you know, this is Google, I think this is also Google, and I've talked to Patrick about this. This is Google kind of separating themselves from these third-party applications that they've kind of brought along with them through that single sign-on. And this is their way of saying, okay, pump, let's pump the brakes here and kind of take the next step.
It, it ties into our cybersecurity work too, because the more that you're not aware of what you're signed into, where you are, what, what you're sharing out, the more vulnerable you become, so the tighter we are, so.
Oh, huge, yeah. With cybersecurity, it's so closely connected because it, it keeps everyone's awareness high of how they're using things. That's, that's, you know, because people do ask the question and then you kind of have to kind of inform them a little bit of the why. You know, so moving forward, just in terms of parent and guardian engagement, you know, I definitely want to do an online session or something to at least give opportunities to people who are wondering the why in this piece and the impact to student accounts and data privacy policies. So ultimately, this will, you know, move into kind of a yearly consent at the time that accounts are created, which is something new as well, and provide resources to inform parents of district resources and information around privacy so that they know we're, we're looking at this stuff. And for, for parent and guardians, the communication channels for this is just really, you know, let them review what we're doing. Keep an eye open for when we're rolling out devices at school start, some of these, these consents that we want to have out. And also allow them to ask questions, review the materials, make, and of course, at the end of the day, make an informed decision around how their students are using educational digital resources and provide them consistent yearly updates on account creation and to our processes. And I, you know, I want to be, you know, able to provide them with just resources so that they have questions about, you know, any of our accounts, how they're being used. We can kind of clearly explain that. And I want them to feel like they can ask a question, but at the same time, you know, I think the first time you look at a data privacy policy is kind of like, you're not sure what part you look at, but then you start getting into it and you, and you're kind of like, oh, okay, you know. But it, it take, you know, look, if you look at some of Google's policies, takes a second read sometimes, but you know, it's a valuable experience. People should be doing it no matter what types of things they're using. At the end of the day, you know, you want to safeguard your own data.
Does your team follow up with parents who, who haven't responded to requests for consent or?
With, with devices, yes.
Yep.
Yeah. So that's kind of, you know, that's a work in progress all the time, you know, because we, we don't keep things from kids.
Right.
But we have to, you know, we do try to follow up and make sure we get things and communicate with the student and, and communicate with the parent as well, you know, that they still have something to sign off on.
And, and in terms of timing, is this something that would be beginning of the year? We try to know what a teacher, what, what, what's going to be needed? Because I'll just say, there's a lot happening at the beginning of the year. I mean, I, I appreciate the district sending me back money because apparently I, I double paid for insurance this year because I thought I hadn't paid for it and so, but there's so many different things to sign at the beginning. Is this something that would be in the beginning? Would it be specific by grade or what class or is, I just don't know how it's going to happen. I could imagine like four different teachers asking for a different approval and it gets overwhelming.
So what I'm hoping to do is I talked to my team about this today. With the consent, the way we want to roll, the thing about doing the consent is have the acceptable use, the one-to-one and this all-in-one individual site. So that, you know, when you sign the acceptable use and you're part of a one-to-one rollout and you're also consenting that to the account. So if your student's getting into, you know, so yearly, there's the acceptable use.
Which is school committee policy.
Yep. And then if you are getting a new account, you would have that included with that. And then if you are part of one of the rollout grades, you would also, that would be all-in-one, one-in-one straight sign-off so that we can kind of, because it makes more work for us if we have to do it broader than that too. So, you know, there's year start, but we also want to get started with this, this year in terms of the consents. And then moving forward, we also want to start communicating with teachers around, you know, what they're using and, and giving them some timelines on, on updating those apps that they need to have individual class sign-offs on or things that may be going away.
Yeah, so Google flicked the switch a little bit to say, we don't cover this anymore. You need to go get consent a few weeks ago. We were ready to do it, but we, Dan and I and Nicholas met and talked about, we don't want to pull the rug. Again, I keep saying that. That's where we're sort of this one-to-two month. And I'm okay with that because like I said, I feel like we're very far ahead of the curve on this. I don't feel there's any real danger, but we want, we want to make sure we get approval and a little bit of information out there first because you don't want to create a confusion or a panic. And so we didn't flick things off overnight so that all of a sudden someone's going to present tomorrow and they can't use something. But we're getting out ahead of it. So tonight's the first step. And then as he said, in the next month or so, we want to get the first round of consents out there.
And yeah, and the processes get easier the more you do them, you know. So I see this as, you know, let's do the consents, get that piece figured out, work on the backend to kind of modify the accounts, also inform the educators, let them know. And at the same time, I think, you know, parents, you know, inform them around the changes in policies, what that means to their student. And just, you know, having an experience of going, you know, if they've ever had any questions about any use, they have a chance to kind of have those addressed.
Okay. And to be clear, so then, as I mentioned before, we're not officially trying to approve the data privacy practices in North Reading. We're just specifically talking tonight about giving consent to reach out or we're giving approval to reach out to parent and guardians for consent
Steps.
on these additional services that are no longer covered under Google.
Exactly.
Kind of approving our next steps.
That's what I wasn't, that's what I was not a hundred percent clear on when I was reading through it last night, like, what are we exactly approving? So, okay. We're clear now. Thank you.
So essentially, you know, next step would be to, you know, if approved, communicate with families and then, you know, educators, kind of what these pieces look like. Email out, have them opportunity to attend a webinar, learn more about it. Prior to the consent going out, provide the consent, give them the option to select the additional services that they want to consent for or not consent for. And then ultimately update their accounts and go from there.
And, gee, one, one basic question. You might have talked about this, but when I'm looking at what the additional services are, like YouTube clearly is a third party. But like, the additional service that required the additional consent, even Google owned?
Well, YouTube owns YouTube.
YouTube, yeah.
Google owns, oh, I didn't know that.
Some of this could be, we speculated, are they, are they looking to separate themselves too and, and branch off? And then some of it's the way they operate and what, yeah, so that.
I, I think they're.
They also become paid services at some point? Is that?
Well.
There's lots of speculation.
There's no ads. There's no ads in the educational version, but I do think as YouTube continues to grow, you know, people around the world spend an average of like a month of their lives on YouTube. It just continues to grow. I think they want to start to, you know, I don't think, I think they know that they're not going to lose all their users through this. So let's start being more clear around what our goals are with YouTube, where's it going? And if this is the only hiccup in their way to keep moving that forward and still protecting themselves in terms of if they decided to have that information around what people are viewing on YouTube used as data somewhere to provide them with, you know, some sort of compensation somewhere they can do it. Applied digital skills is a curriculum. Assignments is a AI tool that they've put in place to check for plagiarism. Classroom's on both lists. I don't, I, I've seen that on both lists. I don't know why they have it on both lists. CS First is a computer science curriculum. Google Alerts is the, you enter the search term and they'll send you daily emails on specific terms. Google Arts and Culture is declining quickly. It's an older site that they pushed for years and it provides lots of arts, libraries and images. Google Bookmarks is what it says it is. It's bookmarking tool with Google allows you to do bookmarking. Google Books, you know, some of these are services they started years ago that, you know, never really took off but are still included and they haven't sunset them yet. Google Earth, we're familiar with. Groups is a collaborative tool for online groups. We've had to enable that for.
I feel like AI is a part of this a lot.
It is, yeah.
Like I, like you look at something like maps or, or, or news or even translate that it's areas where they might be focusing on AI development and that puts it in a different category for them.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
And, and again, everything is like, the students can't just be in groups outside of the network. Like, none of that's changing.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But it's just.
Just in terms of trying to figure out what Google's got in mind here, it's.
Yeah, it's.
Yep. That's a, that's a good take on what could be happening here.
And they could have higher usage amongst people who are not using it in Google for Education among some of these. And it's worth it for them just to focus somewhere else.
Well, you speak about translate. I will say, Dr. Downs also just made a video showing how to use translate with no words. It's set to music, but it just walks you through everything just to, you know, on our website. Like, it's on our website that if anything you want to see, you click translate. It's not going to be a perfect translation. It's going to be pretty darn good and it's getting better all the time. But we want to start sending that out to people that can see how to either translate something we send home or translate what's written on our website easily. So we're going to be sharing that out a little bit more too.
And another note on translate, translate is their own tool, but they also farm translate out to a lot of other services for, for the, the algorithm of translate. So that could be included, you know, part of the reason too.
I use it to help solve crossword puzzles.
So, any other questions?
Oh, I cheat all the time. I'm always looking things up.
So a couple of things. First off, let me disagree by saying this is not the most interesting thing on the planet because it is. I do, I deal with PII every day, so I deeply appreciate the work you guys have been doing. This is phenomenal. And I, you know, I can't speak for what's going on in every district, but I can say for a lot of companies I work with, you're way in advance of them. And, you know, they're, they're trying to solve a lot of the problems that you're already six, six steps ahead of them. So if you do want to do a presentation on this stuff, I'm happy to help out on that stuff. Or, or present to other districts. I'm very happy to do some of that.
Great.
And I love the fact that we are differentiating between these types of applications. Every time I sign one of these forums, beginning of this year or with other organizations, I mean, it's kind of a joke.
It's broad.
Yeah, it's, it's ridiculously broad.
Yeah.
The fact that we're getting this specific is great. Especially when you're talking about single sign-on because that just gives you such global access to things. To now separate out what you should or should not be having access to is, is great. So I deeply appreciate the work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Excellent presentation and we'll, can I have a motion to approve?
I move that the committee vote to approve the district's plan to reach out to parents and guardians about the upcoming changes to consent on the Google platform. Does that help? Does that work?
That works.
Second.
We have a motion.
Sorry, Jeff. I know.
No, I was just about to say, that's just, that's just crazy how you just came up with that.
I know, but sorry, good.
Motion? We have a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Downs.
Thank you, Dr. Downs.
And, and, and the last question before you leave, has Dr. Daley's softball game improved at all?
He had a great season.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
This guy's gone.
No, I, I was.
He's an all-star.
No one's in the room.
I know, we even don't have our middle school wrapped up.
That's great stuff.
Okay. Anything not on here? We can go to routine matters and wrap this up soon. So routine matters, we have a variety of minutes to approve.
Got it.
Diana, you want to lead us in these?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of the school committee dated September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three as written.
Motion? Can I have a second?
Second. Usually you guys are fighting over something.
We have a motion, we have a second. And I don't know if people want to, you weren't there, so it's up to you guys if you want to say. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining?
Me.
Okay, so it passes four to zero, one abstention. Okay, next.
I move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee dated September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three as written.
Second. Lead a second. Okay, motion. We have a second. And let's just see, just opening again to see who is here.
Same day.
Same day, so same thing. Okay.
Still not here.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes four to zero.
Am I supposed to say abstain?
No, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, next one, October.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of the school committee on October sixth, twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
Just to be consistent.
I can't see who is here because I don't, can't see.
I wasn't here, I wasn't here for the last ones.
Access. So you are not here? We have a motion?
No.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstain.
Okay, passes four to zero. October twenty-third, executive.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of the school committee on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, passes four, zero.
I move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, abstentions?
Abstain.
One, so passes four to zero. Okay, thank you very much. Budget update, now that this time. Staffing update was in our packet. Do you have any, any things on that, Dr. Daley?
I can, I can share through.
Yeah, if you want to.
What's up here? I hired long-term substitutes, special education at the Bachelor's School. Digital learning paraprofessional, a building substitute. We had some people sort of move up in roles and move into some different roles. Teacher at the Hood School, Ms. Erin Day for Point Five FTE. Theresa Gabush is a paraprofessional, special education. Shay Holly's a long-term substitute teacher. Melissa Martinez and Caitlin Piscadillo, Aubrey Roberts, Christine Shelton, we're all paraprofessionals for special education. Alicia Valdez is a long-term sub for grade three. Hired two long-term substitutes, Linda Pashoni, who was a teacher for many years in the middle school. Is back as a math middle school teacher. Carrie Anne Moore, one of our paraprofessionals, is serving this year as a, a long-term sub, special education teacher at the high school because Mr. Gannon moved into the role of secondary coordinator, long-term substitute. Gracie L. Swanson is a permanent substitute in, in food services. And we have a few long-term subs also as an other district coordinator, Ms. Crohn, and then Pamela Heiser as a new teacher for ESL, replacing Ms. Fitzgerald.
I guess my only questions are always the same, not what's on here, but what's not on here. Are there things, are there positions we're still struggling to fill? Are we doing pretty well with that?
There's still a few positions that we're struggling. I think overall, we're, we're doing okay, just many less candidates for positions overall. I think the psychologist at the Bachelor, there's still one that, that we're looking to fill. Anything else that comes to mind, Mr. Clean, that we're trying to?
No, that's the only account standing.
Yeah.
Is there a new librarian at the batch?
Uh, there's a new digital learning paraprofessional.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have a librarian, but the person you're thinking of is probably the digital learning paraprofessional. Yep.
Yeah. No, I just got an email today asking for volunteers and I was like, oh, I don't recognize that name.
So that's, Ms. Russell there is.
We did nothing. Yes, I was.
Still nosey.
And how are we doing for substitutes overall? I know we have sub-permanent ones, but are we still able to get them when we need beyond that or?
I think it's, I don't know.
Find some wood and knock on it. I think it's one of those things that we usually hear from the principals when it's a.
Yeah.
Really an issue. Passing them up to, uh, at the meeting.
Only one open position, Michael? Okay, thank you.
He's up on the third floor. He's up on the third floor.
Yeah.
Where is he?
Okay, bids and donations?
I have a few here. Um, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of six thousand eight hundred dollars from the bachelor, uh, bachelor, bachelor PTO. To be used towards the school water fountain.
I have a second.
Second, sorry.
Okay, motion and a second, and my only comment will be what it always is in these sort of ones. I hate using PTO money to fix water fountains in schools and that's a systemic problem that we have in this district and. But I appreciate the bachelor PTO stepping up when we need it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five, zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-six cents from the hood PTO for the hood school STEM night.
Second.
Not appropriate funding for PTO, sorry.
My comment stands.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
And I move that the committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of four hundred and ninety-five dollars from the little school PTO for bus, for a bus for the grade five enrichment trip. To the Ipswich River in North Reading.
Oh, second.
Okay.
What, they couldn't have walked them, sorry.
It was raining hard actually. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. It was a pretty wet day that day, I know, because it's not one there. Okay, no grants at this time, no overnight trip requests. Subcommittee updates, finance planning team met in November ninth. McGowan, you want to go, you want me to?
Oh, you go.
There you go. Uh, I think the main thing we talked, well, there were two things, one is the, when they were getting the, by the tax classification. There was a good news, which is there was new, more new revenue this year than they were expecting because the Polte, um, or Martin's Landing. That we were worried that they weren't going to do any new buildings this year and it looks like they broke ground, ground on two new buildings. There's actually going to be more new growth than we expected, so. Essentially what they have to do is lower estimates for receipts, so we talked a little bit about that. And then most of the discussion turned into a discussion about the upcoming budget year. And I think I've mentioned it in these updates before that, you know, I, we've kind of thought about the idea of a budget override. It seemed like everybody in the meeting was sort of in agreement that it's time. And so I think we're going to be working in the finance planning team on two different budgets this year. One that will assume a budget, a budget override, so there'll be three warrant articles. The first would be a budget override. We'll figure out what that dollar amount is. That's what Mr. McGowan, Dr. Daley, Mr. Connolly and I were working on before this meeting. Was looking at what would be in there. The overall objective would be to not use some of the funds that we've had to use, but also to do more. Eliminate full day kindergarten fee, lower bus fees, lower activity fees. Add some of the positions we haven't been able to add, things of that nature. Same thing on the municipal side, hire the firefighters they haven't been able to hire, do some of the other things that we haven't been able to do. I mean, we've, we've had a hard time adding things. They've had, they've had requests on for a decade, literally since before I've been on the school committee, the same request. And so the goal will be to figure out what that dollar amount is. Have a budget override vote and if it passes, we would have one budget that includes that. And then we have a second budget, sort of like the doomsday, like, okay, if we don't get it, here's not only what we're not getting, but here's what we probably have to cut. Or how we're gonna, you know, fund it. So sort of like we've done the last couple of years, that budget, but it just is getting harder and harder, so.
Yep.
Anything I missed on that?
I think that's, you nailed it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the key thing was it seemed like the select member there was very much appreciative of the challenges that we're all facing. And, um, and the finance committee members also, and so it seemed like there was. Again, while those votes were taken or anything, I mean, it seems like there's consensus that we're going to try to work on it that way and.
At least work, work down this path and see how it goes, yeah.
And we'll be able to provide some updates later on, but there'll probably be two different budgets that we're working through and.
But this isn't a surprise to anybody. I think this is. Formally slash informally been talked about for a while, so.
Yeah, and, and again, the other one to put on there without getting, you know, out of our, our feed here is that like, just, you know. The budgets are also challenged by just, you know, raises and, you know, and trying to be able to fund our schools and, you know, properly give raises. And that would be another thing that would be a consideration on both the school and the municipal side, so.
Very much on both sides, yep.
We're not, we're not the only ones that are having challenges with, you know, negotiations. Every district is and it's other, it's outside of schools as well. And so it's just a challenge across the town, so. So a good discussion was had. Athletic Subcommittee? Diana Rich?
I just had my notes up and then I lost them, hang on.
And we talked about the, well, they did like a brief update on the fall season as it was, you know, coming close to a close. But the, we talked about the coaches postseason stipends. Basically just evaluating, and Patrick can probably speak to it better than I can, but evaluating, you know, which coaches are included in those stipends? And, and making sure that that is streamlined. You know, in, in some ways it makes sense, but in others it, it might not and just kind of outlining that to make sure. Where they were explaining sort of the big picture to the coaches and how that impacted them. And I also, I think it's still ongoing, but the, the cheerleading, um, coaches are sort of at a lower pay level and just evaluating that as well. I think we got the fifty thousand dollar gift, um, in hand from that generous donation.
And that hasn't come before us yet on the donation side, right, on the?
I think it ha.
Or has it? Okay.
I'll double check.
The, the one that was part of, um, I want to say a will.
For the baseball.
Oh, the baseball, yeah.
She knew the person, yeah.
I think that came.
Yeah.
We did, we did.
We did do that last spring.
You were asleep, so.
Michael Sam.
No, I just remember him.
What's that?
We did receive it, Michael Sam.
Yeah, and we, and we voted to, to accept it, yeah.
And then I think we just talked about the eighth grade, I mean, important things, the eighth grade waivers. Did field hockey this fall, and then I think that wrestling and boys lacrosse came up as well.
Yeah, I saw those waivers.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the, they, it's a very conservative approach to the way they're doing the wa, you know, waivers, so I.
And then there was just some general updates, like turf field updates and golf carts and things like that, but nothing.
Worry.
Yeah.
Do we, random question, but on, on the hockey team, do we have enough participants with North Reading for the boys team? And what's our participation for the co-op for the girls hockey team? Do you have any idea?
Don't have those updates at this time, no. I think they're still gathering all the winter sport information right now.
Oh, you know what, while we're talking about the subcommittees and you're talking about participation, we had that volleyball discussion here. Um, I don't know.
Public, yeah, yeah.
And just since then, just asking other volleyball parents in town, it seems like there could be support for another, like a freshman team. It seems like there's a lot of interest. I don't know where that funding comes from or if that's something that's been, that needs to show consistent interest for a few years before they develop a freshman team or. Cause they have a JV team and a varsity team for volleyball.
Yeah, typically if there's enough participants that sign up.
Yeah.
We can add an additional team because the, the athletic fees and whatnot would cover the additional coaches.
Okay.
So I'm thinking if there wasn't a team, there's always these bubble numbers that, that get to not quite enough to add a whole other team.
So it's, we're still that.
Yeah, and then there's also the question, and, and again, I'm getting out of my expertise here, but. Whether there's opportunities, right, there has to be other teams in other towns for them to play. So.
Winner's schedule's made, how far out are they made? Cause I'd imagine some of those would be sort of made before and if you don't know if you have a team, that's.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure on different sports.
Cause volleyball, I don't know anything about volleyball. Is it, it's a fall sport or is it a winter sport?
Fall.
Fall sport.
So, but no, like it would have been interesting to see like who else in our league is, or who else is there out there, like that was. Doing a, um, that had a freshman team that we could play next year if we put together a freshman team. So there, there are, is an opportunity for kids to play because it just, my observation is volleyball's become, even before that, um, public comment, volleyball's become really popular.
That's great, yeah, I could definitely bring that back. It, I would say it's very unlikely that we had enough people sign up and then we. Usually if we're making cuts, it's only a handful of kids. If there's enough, we very often created second teams or JV twos or, or whatnot, so, yeah. But that's a great point, I'll bring that forward too.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it might, might actually be worthwhile having an athletic update at some time, I mean, from the athletic director, just to, I don't know. Sometime. Finer Subcommittee?
I can take that one off.
I know you've got good notes. I could hear you, I could see you typing on the agenda.
Um, yeah, I know, I realized, I was like, oops, I shouldn't be typing on this. Um, anyways. Um, okay, so, um, Dr. Daley, you might be able to speak a little bit more detail to this, but there's an update, um, hoping for continued grant support for additional year funding. I don't, I don't even know what the grant, where the funding was actually coming from, but that was.
It's the Department of Elementary Secondary Education. We've applied, we've, um, we have not received funding. That's why there's no update officially, but it was one of those, you know, save the date for the meeting for all the winners kind of thing.
Yeah, December seventh, I think.
So I'm optimistic that we will have funding for that for another year, which is great.
Okay, um, and then we got an update on the arts, um, the arts program and, um, their curriculum. They seem to be, be well in hand with, um, their, their curriculum plans for the year. Update to performing arts calendar, it's a very robust schedule, it's worth checking out. There's something always going on. Let's see, um, the PAC sound system, has there been any more movement on that?
We're still, we're still working to try to get some additional information.
Yeah, that's sort of, I find that sort of like unfortunate and alarming that, um, there is a, the completion of the sound system project is being held up. By, um, by building inspection, having proper documentation of this structure and whether or not it can hold up the, the new speakers, is that it?
And I, I, yeah, I fully support the reason why it's being held up. The problem is we don't have the, the drawings.
Right.
We're trying to track down the drawings of this particular part of the PAC to make sure we know not what's. How that piece of it is attached to the larger wall so that it then can support the speakers that we're trying to put on there. And we, at this point, we're thinking that it's a, um, probably a change order. And so the actual drawings for what eventually got added, that's what we're trying to track down. And we're working with the architects, the building inspector, everyone trying to get that information. But we have, actually have the speakers, we're just not able to install them yet.
Is that, is that why somebody was reaching after me, asking about photos when, when it was being built?
Yes.
Was there a project management firm, I mean, you see the architect, was there a project management firm?
There was.
So they not?
Those are great fans.
That's what we're, we're trying to work with everybody involved to get the, uh, the exact drawings we need. And right now, we're trying to get the building inspector and our facilities director to put it in. Um, language that the architects and those folks can easily respond to. I, I think my, my attempt may have been too not technical enough perhaps, and so, um, I thought I had all the jargon down, but.
The thing on the wa, on the, on the, the thing on the thing?
I'm, I'm going to recruit David to help you, this is what he does is, um, in project management, so.
Yeah.
Come in here, figure this out, we gotta have some speakers.
Actually, in the performing arts center. Yeah, get him on it tomorrow. Performing Arts Center also, the, over the summer, weren't they going to do a project like, there was like a backdrop that they were going to take down and try to repair and put back up?
Did that happen?
Did that happen? Did, was it, were they able to fix it or not?
No, it's all related. Part of the problem is that we don't have the specs for the speaker. We don't have the specs for that proscenium.
Proscenium, yeah.
Or anything within it. So the speaker, the, the projection system is within it. And so trying to get that fixed, repaired has been, um, a challenge. And do we know if there's a?
No, I might, I might, I might, just because he needs something else to do.
Is there an alternative plan, like, do we?
Kind of scary.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
There are alternative plans, they, they all have a cost.
They all, all a lot of money, yeah.
Really frustrates me that we have to spend money to rent speakers when we own speakers that we can't put up. But I, again, I fully understand why.
No, I agree.
Approval, but we want to have the documents so we can get the approval, so we can put the speakers up that we already own.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, after that, um, let's see, just updates on the, um, Unipay link. There's some problem with, um, can't read my own notes. Oh, with, with like the multi, multi-discount, um, not showing up, like people would have to, to send in a check. You couldn't use Unipay if you had the multi.
Mr. Connolly and I are going to be looking at that and working with the town to make sure that that's all.
Um, and then finally, just talking about the, the upcoming musical SpongeBob. And, um, that they're, um, are you going to be able to bus kids?
She mentions a SpongeBob at least tonight, right?
Um, are, are, there was a question about busing the other two elementary schools over, are they going to be able to get to go see it?
We're trying to work that out. It's, it's balancing the cost and the time. It's, it's very, is, we value highly having students. You know, embrace our theater program and view it. It's challenging to make the arrangements, you know.
Yeah.
Giving up time from X, Y, Z in order to come up here, do it for the day, but. So we're, we're trying to work with our principals to figure that out.
Yeah.
Mr. Clean helped to, uh, guide that conversation as a former principal and now as a curriculum leader.
And naturally, I think, as I said in the meeting, I think it's so important for the kids to see it, it's, you know.
Because it's SpongeBob.
Well, not, not because it's SpongeBob. Anything, I mean, just, you know, I, I think any of the productions are so good and so good to, and so great to have the younger generation see.
There was also a great a cappella fest in Wakefield that North Reading helped host too, so. There too, great.
As Ms. Rilev said, the calendar is robust. The, the all-town chorus and band are going to be back-to-back nights, the second and third of April, I believe. And the arts night is distinct this year, that's going to happen as well. It's not going to be the same night, so.
Okay, that's the update.
That is the update.
Okay, no admin or report or correspondence?
Uh, none at this time. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Clean, I checked, I think it's five-thirty to seven is the steam night for hood, so I just, um, want to clarify that as well.
Okay, future business, November twenty-seventh, six-thirty, we have a meeting. December eleventh, at six-thirty, we have a meeting and January eighth, believe it or not. Third meeting is in twenty-twenty-four, at six-thirty. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Motion move a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, thank you everyone.
No one wants to abstain?
No.